Numbers.
Yeah. Anyway, it is my pleasure to introduce to you Doug Owens. Unfortunately, we've run out of time. Before I start...
Scott, you can give yourself questions, yeah?
There are three by five cards at your tables. So if you have a question for Doug, please write it down. And is there someone who can pick those up? Anyone? Okay, great. So, and then bring them to me, and then I will answer them. Okay. Thank you. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Doug Owens. He's a candidate for Congress in the 4th District. Just a wonderful human being. He's sixth generation Utah. He is a Ute. And he is married to one of my colleagues, Cynthia Smart Owens', daughter, Dorthee Smart. And she's a wonderful human being, too. They have four children. Doug went to Yale Law School. And one thing you may not know about Doug, which kind of tells you what kind of person he is, Cynthia had to do residency training in pediatrics. And he took off two years while she did that in order to take care of the kids. They're the proud parents of four children. He was here two years ago, as you may remember. And we had envisioned a debate, and it turned out to be mostly a monologue. And so we had the same situation this year. We did invite Dee Combin, and she's not here. There are a couple of things that I want to say about Doug before we get going. And one is, he has great patience. I've been in rooms where people ask outrageous, you know, things that would make me pull my hair out, which you can tell was happening. And he is just so patient and so thoughtful. The other thing I really like about him is he shows up. So, write down your questions, bring them up, Doug. I'll end, and then we'll go to some questions. So, Doug.
Thank you all. Thank you Rotarians for inviting me out today. It is important to show up, you know? My opponent's in town today. And I had something that was more important than this. I can't imagine what that might be. I remember 25 years ago, driving my dad around to various campaign events. Some of you may remember him, Wayne Owens. And he always made it a priority to get to Rotary. And I will always do that and have done it. And you ought to take that into account, who came to vote, asked you for your votes, this person today. Thank you, Scott, for that introduction. He was whispering to me about that thing that looked like a medical device. He said, "I've done enough surgery in the third world, I could make that a medical device." He said he could do an appendectomy with the gavel and the butter knife, too. Watch out, this is young man, too. But it's nice to be here with you. And I just, I do want to introduce myself briefly. I want to thank my wife Cynthia for being here, my mother-in-law Dorthee, who is a longstanding member of the Salt Lake Rotary. And I would like to just introduce myself briefly to you and tell you why I am running. You know, to me, this is about family. Too many families working very hard, sometimes three and four jobs between the parents, just to keep lights on and food on the table. And they're not doing very well, not able to save for their retirement or their kid's education. And this is a very personal issue. It's played out in the Owens family in my father's life. Some of you may remember, I mentioned him going to Wayne Owens. He was born down in Panguage, Utah, the youngest of nine children born in a one-bedroom house. And I mean, born in the house. His family was dirt poor. My grandfather had lost his farm in the Depression. And so my father grew up with a loving family, but one that had very little opportunity to help him on in the world. He did not have a toothbrush until he was 15. But he believed in the American dream, and he moved up to Salt Lake at 18 and got a job at Kentucky Fried Chicken and was able to put himself through the University of Utah, working nights and in the summer, saving. What he did is impossible for most people nowadays. You cannot work at a service job like he had and pay for a year at a public school. Much tougher to do that. And we've got to do a lot more to help keep college affordable, to make sure there's good pathways into living wage jobs in our country. You know that the jobs that have been lost since the recession in '08, the jobs that were lost have largely been recreated in number, but they pay on average 22% less than the jobs lost in the recession. And what that tells you is Americans are working harder than ever, more jobs and hours, and not doing as well at it. And I want to make sure we do everything we can to make the kind of job you don't need three of to raise your family on. My wife and I have also lived this personally, Scott mentioned it a minute ago, that after I'd been practicing law for a few years, we figured out that we needed to get Cynthia through her education, get her medical training finished up. She's a pediatrician. And actually, I will tell you that a pediatrician offers a lot more value to the world than another run-of-the-mill lawyer like me. We needed to get her through there. And we had three little boys, ages five, three, and one. And we decided that I would stay home for a couple of years so she could get that pediatric training over with. And I did that. It was the best time of my life, I will say. I would give my right arm to go back and have a couple of weeks with those three little boys. They're grown up and moved on now. One's in med school down in Texas, and we've got one in law school. It's quite my best efforts to help him on in life. And another one working hard. It was a tough thing in a lot of ways. We were learning to live on $22,000 a year. And we also were learning that one of our sons had autism, and we were coming to grips with that fact. But it was the best thing I ever did. It changed my life. The reason I tell you that about that is that I look around and I see way too many families who aren't able to choose what's best for them. And the economic circumstances are too tough for a lot of people. And I just want to make sure we do everything we can. And I think this is what Congress could do more of, living wage jobs, so that people have opportunity in their families to choose what's right for their family. Now, Scott also mentioned, well, I see myself as somebody who's well-suited to do that. I've been a business defense lawyer for now 25 years. I understand sometimes there's times the government has just got to get out of the way and let the private sector do its thing. Other times, the government can do things to level the playing field, to make sure that people have every educational opportunity that we can offer them, so they're able to take care of themselves and their family. Or level the playing field for business. I've earned a lot of my living from business getting overregulated. And I can see sometimes there is a need to get rid of regulation. So I think I'm well-suited from my background to help make those kind of choices. And I strongly believe in working across party lines to get things done. And again, I'll mention Wayne Owens worked with Jake Garn to get the Central Utah Water Completion Act through Congress, which that project now brings half of the water to Salt Lake County. Half that water in your glass comes from a bipartisan friendship. That yields tangible benefits for Utah. It yields tangible benefits for our country. We've got serious problems, and we need to work together, even though we may not see eye to eye. Now, I know many of you are going to be skeptical that one person can really make a difference. And I do believe one person can make a difference. And I just want to share one last little story about myself, and then we'll open it up. Scott mentioned I went to the Ute. And then when I got done, I wanted to go to law school. And so I wanted especially to go to Yale Law School, attracted to the Harry Potter-like buildings that they have there. And so I applied, but Yale was having other ideas, and they turned me down. But I didn't want to give up. And so on the day, this is to your point, Nick, earlier about not giving up, I went back to New Haven, Connecticut, and I introduced myself on the day that classes started to the Dean of Admission. And I said, "Dean, I'm Doug Owens from Utah. Can you make a spot?" The dean said, "No, didn't you get that letter?" And I said, "Well, I got that letter, but I was hoping you might make an exception." "No, I'm not going to make an exception. You can't come." Well, it was quite humiliating, but I got a chair, and I sat it down the hall from the dean's office. And every half, about every hour, I'd go poke my head in there and say, "Dean, can you make a spot?" He kept saying no, all day long, and then long about dinnertime. And he actually led me into the law school that way, at the end of the day. So you're looking at the only guy in the 200-year history of Yale who pestered his way in. And so when people say, "What can you do in Washington?", I'm going to work harder. When other people say it can't be done, I'm going to stick around. And when they say it's time to go home, I'll keep working for what's important for us here in Utah and just stick up for what we need. So that's me in a nutshell, and now happy to take any and all questions you may have. But I do hope you'll remember I came in person. I think that's important, that your representatives show up. There's nothing more important in this town than the Rotary Club, to be honest with you. And I think my performance developed a record of not showing up for veterans, for seniors, others who have sought your help. So anyway, but with that, I will turn it back to Scott.
Can you hear me? Is it working? Is it cutting out? My microphone. Okay, first question. So millions of Americans are struggling and are just one paycheck emergency room just away from financial crisis. According to the Corporation for Economic Development, 44% of American households don't have enough savings to stay out of poverty for more than three months if they lose their income. And this is even more striking when broken out by race and ethnicity. Yet of the more than $400 billion annually in tax incentives that promote asset building, less than 3% benefit at the bottom, 40% of earners. What should the federal government think about wealth inequality?
Okay, so could you all hear that? It was wealth inequality. And Scott had some details to back up the question. So I come at this from the perspective of the American dream. If you're willing to work hard and play by the rules, you ought to be able to get ahead in our country. That was my father's experience. I am not a wealth redistributionist. It does not bother me that a kid flipping burgers is earning less than the CEO of a burger company. What does bother me is that the kid flipping burgers, if he's never had a shot at working his way up the line, that bothers me. That's a problem with the American dream. Some people will tell you the American dream is that a few of us get to have a shot at getting wealthy. That is not the American dream. There's nothing wrong with getting wealthy, but the American dream is not about a few of us being able to do well. It's about all of us and how, whether every American can get a house in a safe neighborhood and put their kids in a good school and look forward to a retirement with some dignity. It's about how all of us are faring, rather than a few of us. Now, I'm not a redistributionist. I think we absolutely want an economy that rewards hard work, that rewards creativity, innovation, and investment and saving. All those things are absolutely admirable and necessary, and I do not favor taking money away. I do worry losing ground in our country. One in five people who consider themselves to be in the middle class before the '08 recession felt like they dropped out of it in just the last eight years. I mean, this is like a serious trend. I say it in a nutshell for Utah. I grew up in a place here in Salt Lake. When I was a kid, one wage would raise a family. You go out now, go to a track station early in the morning, like I have, to shake hands with voters. I have seen moms dragging their little kids out at 6:30 or 7:00 in the morning, a baby in backpack, sleeping, and a little three-year-old picking them to daycare before that mom was going out to work. People need access to the kind of jobs you don't need three or four of to raise your kids. Now, there's a lot to be done about that, and I think the federal government can help. And this is really why I wanted to run, folks, I've got to tell you. If we can educate every person to their capacity, that will grow the economy for all of us. That will help people take care of their families and themselves. They'll demand less in government services. It's a virtuous cycle that we need to push. So that's college affordability. That means apprenticeships in schools. That means job training for the guy who's thrown out of work in middle age. It means a host of things. That everybody gets that maximum possible opportunity of education. So when they're ready to, anybody who's willing to work hard and play by the rules ought to have that avenue open to them. I strongly believe the best social program ever was a good job. And you remember Ronald Reagan said that? You know who said that before Ronald Reagan? It was Bobby Kennedy. This is something Democrats and Republicans can agree on. It's something that ought to get our government working together again. We've got this broken Congress. Well, let's get education. It's the best pathway to get Democrats and Republicans working together and solve the biggest problem facing our country. So that's what I want to do about wealth inequality, is make sure anybody who wants to work hard and play by the rules has got a shot, a shot at the American dream.
Affordable Care Act is in trouble. What should be done?
So the question is Affordable Care, also known as Obamacare, is it in trouble? Absolutely. They're endless. And this again is, goes back to having a broken Congress. We've got a Congress now where one side will only vote to repeal, and the other side won't vote to fix it. People working together, rolling up their sleeves and trying to fix what's wrong with it. I don't think it's going to help to have another 60-odd votes to repeal. We need to get to work to fix what's wrong with it. There are a lot of things wrong with it. We've got the exchanges are closing up on the rates. It's not done enough to control costs. It puts burdensome requirements on doctors. You've got to collect all kinds of data. It doesn't, it hits Utah usually hard in the 4th District with the medical device tax. And we've got to provide insurance for people. And we've got to get away, we're the only Western country that still puts that cost on employers. You know, I met a small business owner recently who was a really nice guy, really cared about his employees, and he had told me he had to reduce every employee's hours to 30 because he couldn't afford the health insurance. That guy should not be put in that situation. We've got to get away from that burden on employers. Because like I say, my big mission in running for Congress is to get us back to living wage jobs. That means the private sector's got to be doing well. That's the heart and soul of the American economy, of course, is the private sector. We've got to make sure they're able to hire. So my big answer on the ACA, the Affordable Care Act, is that we've got to get back working together, and let's solve some of these problems and stop having this partisan gridlock that's ruining us on so many levels.
Question. According to an ad on TV, if it was related to an ad, could you explain how you cost Utah children $2 trillion?
Well, so the question was how I cost Utah children $2 trillion related to an ad. There is, my opponent is running a negative attack ad. I don't know if any of you have seen it on Legacy Highway. There's another one making fun of my name. My name is Henry Douglas Owens, and I've been taken to task for using my first name. I ask you, if your name was, first name was Henry, would you go by Henry? Actually, my mother and father called me Doug from the day I was born, but we just got that thing going in our family where we go by middle names. There is a lot of nonsense in politics, and it has been demonstrated amply so far in the last month in the TV battle that's going on in this race. My opponent's been coming out with a lot of personal stuff. In fact, attacking, resurrecting some old lies about my father that were 25 years old. And so I got my family gone after. Watch out, Cynthia. And my name now, and in a very serious distortion of a case I was involved in 15 years ago about the Legacy Highway, where we had stood up for a group of Utahns to make sure the federal government that was approving the design of that highway followed the law. And so as a result of that case, where we stood up for Utahns against the federal government, we got a highway that complied with the law, that is a safer, better highway. We got consideration given to tracks, or to frontrunner, I should say. That was a big step forward in getting the frontrunner along the Wasatch Front. So I'm very proud of what I did in that case, and I hope people want to send somebody to Washington who's willing to stand up to Washington when they want to break the law. You know, those negative ads are kind of a hoot. When we, the other night, I was watching TV with my son, and that ad came on for the Doug, the name ad. And he said, "That's nothing, Dad. I could tell him how to make a negative ad." So we've been having problems with that. But there are serious issues. It's easy for them to get lost. I try to reach out as much as I can, but a lot of the battle gets carried on on TV. You know, for most voters, this is going to boil down to about three minutes of commercials from either side. It's not an ideal situation.
Climate change, hoax created by China? What actions should our government take?
So the question was climate change, if you could, Scott. Is it a hoax? No, I don't think it's a hoax. I believe in the science. We've got to look at science. I believe in that, and don't want to ignore things just because it's inconvenient. The question is, what do we do about it? I do believe there's a human contributor. But the question is, what do you do about it? And that's a much tougher question. You know, I don't believe that we ought to hamstring the American economy compared to other economies. So I think it's a mistake to put big carbon taxes on in our country when other countries are just going to build more power plants and make up whatever we save. So I think it's got to be an international effort. It's just a very obvious thing. Paris was a decent start in terms of trying to get countries to think about what they can do. But I would oppose unilateral efforts. I think it needs to be an international agreement about how we're going to make sure that other countries come up. Don't just evaporate any benefits that we have. I don't want to hamstring our economy for no global benefit.
Campaign finance. You've had the pleasure of raising money a couple of times to Citizens United. What would you recommend?
Well, I've been endorsed by a group. The question was campaign finance. Can everybody hear Scott when he talks, what he's talking on that mic?
See, someone broke my microphone.
Campaign finance. So I've been endorsed by a group called N Citizens United. I think that there's too much money in politics, and it's not helpful to people. They're mistrustful. Average voters are very mistrustful for a good reason about the system. We've got to get that out of politics if we can, especially that dark money. I've been proud to be endorsed by N Citizens United. I believed in campaign finance reform for a long, long time. There's a scary book out there called Republic Lost. If you want to take a look at that, talks about in 2011, we had very serious issues. We had two wars, we had a housing bubble, we had other things going on. And the thing that occupied most time in Congress was credit card swipe fees. So you can see that the influence that big money in politics has. And I think we've got to go to work to change that.
Okay, two related questions. Do you want to take control of federal lands within our borders? And you're picking on the bear ears, Mike.
It's about federal lands and bears' ears. You know, 80% of Utah is federally owned, and I think the biggest issue isn't exactly the legal ownership, right? The biggest issue is how we're going to take care of them, how they get allocated, how their use is decided, rather than the exact question of ownership. Lawsuit has a lot of chance of success. And so I don't support that. I think that's largely a waste, and I put that money toward retaining teachers and some other important things that our state needs to get going on. But the question of how the land use gets decided is going to be up to Congress in large measure, and I'd like to tell you my approach to that. I strongly feel that we can build a better, bigger tourism economy in Utah. We advertise our mighty five national parks. We've got the most beautiful of the 50 states. I grew up herding cows down in southern Utah. I think it's unbelievably beautiful country, and I want every American to know about it and make this a tourist destination. And there's a lot more that can be done on that. I think sometimes the highest and best use of our landscape is to save it, make sure we hold on to what makes Utah beautiful and special. But, you know, I recognize that we have other needs. I've been an attorney, as I mentioned. I've had oil and gas clients, I've had extractive industry clients. I know that sometimes the best use is to have an extractive use. I feel like I'm well-qualified to help draw that line in Congress about what we're going to do with the federal lands. So I'm open to discussion on this issue. Our state's being governed at 80% by statutes, now many of which are approaching or over 100 years in age. It's time to reassess what we're doing in a global way, the large, the big-picture sense. But I feel like I'm well-suited to help draw those boundaries or make those decisions about how to use our landscape.
What are the boundaries of your district, and what are you most interested in pursuing when you get to Washington?
So boundaries of the district, most of Salt Lake County, you're south of 21st South. You're in the district unless you live in Holliday, Cottonwood, I, Sandy, or Gray. Utah's as badly gerrymandered as anywhere in the world, in our country, I should say. I really wish that every congressional district was a swing district, and that everybody got to hear strong campaigns based on ideas and based on what they thought the individual could do. That's important to get back to. Gerrymandering is a real disaster in our country. It's a disaster here in Utah. We have, so that southern part of Salt Lake County, a little bit in Utah County, if you're west of I-15, By and Levan and Juab, and then the north half of San Pete. So it's kind of mouthful to describe it. What was the other question?
What are you most passionate about?
Oh, what do I want to do when I get to Congress? I've talked to you about this living wage job. I think that's really an essential thing that we've got to get after in Congress. It means education, infrastructure, reforming the corporate tax code, lowering the overall rate of doing away with loopholes, their opportunity to compete, and some other ideas. But we're not going to get anything done for it again. And so when people say, "What's the first thing you want to do?", I've introduced this kind of ethics package, that I take back to work. And that includes working five days a week instead of three. You know, they fly into town Tuesday morning, and they're out there by Thursday afternoon. It's really not even three days. They're out there together and working together. With self-promoting kind of mailers that my opponent is, they're belting it quite extravagantly. I think there's a waste of taxpayer dollars. I want to make sure we do away with luxury travel. I want to make sure that we don't pay Congress if they don't pass a responsible budget. There's a No Pay, No Budget, No Pay Act that I support. So I think there's some ethics things that could make Congress work a little more seriously and effectively together. So that coupled with my priority on jobs and education, I think, is what I want to first do.
Do you have a question?
I was just hoping you could address the bears' ears specifically.
Bears' ears. Yes. So, you know, I don't like, as I said, I grew up down, herding cows down there. I think it's an incredibly beautiful part of the world. I think a lot of that should be preserved. I don't like to see us get run over, roughshod by Washington, and the president not taking account of our views. Utahns can be good stores, and the landscape has been, and I want to make sure we don't get run over. But I do think the highest and best use for much of that territory down there is to be preserved.
Can you speak about the lack of political balance in Utah?
I could talk all day. I think a two-party system is a good system. A one-party system, you know, it isn't healthy and a competition of ideas. I don't dislike Republicans. My mother-in-law's a Republican, and she knows I like her just fine. Republicans have good ideas. I strongly believe in getting the best that both parties have to offer. And I don't like it when one party is so practically stamped out that I think dialogue gets too extreme. I think it's healthy to have, work toward the moderate center to compromise with people you don't agree with. That's how you run your family. That's how you run your business. That's how we need to run the country.
That question just takes three minutes.
Okay, well, you're very patient. I appreciate your time today. I guess I'll just close with a plea that you vote. The ballots are going to drop next Tuesday to get mailed to you all. You'll have four weeks to fill them out. Please vote. I tell my kids that every time I've gone in a voting booth, and it's going to be a little different because you get them by mail, every time I've gone in a voting booth, I have had tears well up in my eyes because of the serious, it's very serious to me. You know, I think there is tangible benefit that Congress can bring about for our country. I think if you think about the history of the world, how many people have lived without benefit of democracy in republican forms of government, it's a very touching thing. I hope everybody will get up and vote. Thank you for having me. Thank you, Doug. Thank you for showing up. And I couldn't agree with you more as far as being in the voting booth, having grown up where there was no vote. There was no democracy.
Was that Utah?
It's trouble when Legman has a microphone. For those of you who don't know, I grew up in Tehran, Iran, and immigrated to this country 40 years ago. And there is no doubt that there is no better place to live. But it is up to us to exercise the privilege to vote and to get to know the candidates. So thank you for showing up. Thank you very much. We're going to donate a book that Doug is going to sign. The Wolves Are Back. The Wolves Are Back? So we're going to ask you to sign this book that goes to Franklin and the Trump family. And we also have a gift for you. You know, as times change and demographics change, people, the millennials are not joining clubs like this. If you look around, you can see that we're all up there except for Nick and a couple others, Laura's in there. But we're trying to get the message across that's what this group is all about. And it is about improving lives in our city. This is a report to the community that was produced for the years that my deputy, employee Hatch, led our club. And it says, "Improving lives, 10,000 lives every year." I can assure you, this group exceeded that goal. So we present you with this little report to the community and we invite you to join our movement. Thank you very much. Next week, we have a tour of the, George S. and Dolores Dor...